Jumped out, what I'll say for everyone is that we are recording the meeting tonight as required. If you do get pushed out of the meeting due to the software or some other issue, please just use the link and join back in. We aren't doing it on purpose, it just happens with the technology sometimes.
Toby says she can't unmute herself.
I saw that, so I'll do the roll call, you could just say here and then I'll know who's there. Tom?
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Ella? Move on, James Donahue?
Here.
Here, oh, Ella's there. James Donahue?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Todd? Last but not least, Joe Carroll?
Here.
I'm here too.
Yeah, Anita, I saved you because I know you got bumped out. Anita is there, excellent, Tom, good to call to order whenever you are ready.
Great, thank you folks for joining us this evening, will you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are we able to speak with Toby yet, is she still having a technical issue? Just regarding the community comments, if you had any?
So we'll have to ask her to use the chat, so with this software, I'm not able to unmute anyone. Everyone is in charge of their own unmuting, certainly I'm able to mute folks if I need to. So there's no way for me to unmute. It looks like Toby is saying she hasn't received anything, no one has received set community comments to her.
Okay. Moving on, yeah, folks, if you're not speaking, anyone out there, if you mute your microphones, it's just helpful with the bandwidth and the distractions, so appreciate it, thank you. So unfortunately, we don't have any recognitions or presentations at this time, can't wait till we get back to being able to do those things. Unless Dan, if you had something in that portion, let me know, but I don't think we had anything for recognitions. You're muted. You're muted, Dan. Gotcha.
Thanks, Tom, you told everybody to mute, so I did. Just would say to everybody from the public and certainly the board members, we are trying to continue to push things out through our social media, as well as through our school website, so please check our Facebook page, our school website, Instagram and Twitter. I do know we had some posts this week for the National Technical Honor Society, I believe, for Morgan Fish, and there's other things that have been going out as well, I don't want to go down through the list and miss anything, but we're trying to get those recognitions out there through social media. That's where the kids are at and many of the parents are at these days anyways, so we're hoping that we're reaching them, although we can't wait to have everybody back in person. So we can do some personal recognition at our meetings, because it certainly is one of the best things, the most enjoyable parts of many of our meetings. Yep, there it is, Technical National Honor Society.
Yeah, and maybe for the June meeting, we'll have a couple of things, maybe we invite people and just recognize some of the things, there's so much good stuff going on out there. Maybe we can mention some of those things in June.
I agree.
No presentations, there's only one board committee to report out on, and that is the Finance Committee. We had our meeting on May 14th, did you want to speak to anything regarding that, Dan?
Just for the folks that are in public, that meeting was held via video conference, was open to the public, and I want to say there was 80 participants, including the board members, or somewhere around that number that evening, so we do appreciate folks coming out and listening in on the meetings. Tonight, it looks like we're at about 48, that's all that I had.
Great, thank you. Well, actually, you're up next, sir, superintendent's report.
Yep, so negotiations update, as you'll see on the agenda, we have a couple of MOAs with the Fort Edward Teachers Association to be voted on this evening. So certainly, after a lot of hard work from the board and the Teachers Association, we have some tentative agreements. I will say that the Teachers Association ratified that agreement earlier today. I just found that information out about one hour ago, so the FETA President, Mrs. Stark, did let me know that, so we have that there. Moving down, the Fort Edward Budget Vote and Election Update. I just wanted to share again that folks should have received the postcards that we've spoken about at a couple of our online meetings. And if you are a registered voter, you'll receive that ballot mailed automatically. If you're not, you do have to reach out to Mrs. Bissette, District Clerk, to get added to that list. That's the only way it can happen is by mail, there's no in-person picking up ballots. So please, if you're looking to vote, you don't know if they're on the list, please verify with her, and if you're not, she will add you. And I did want to, I was going to show quickly draft ballot. And again, it's in draft form, but I can kind of show folks what it looks like. Because I'm certain, I have never voted by absentee ballot, maybe some people out there have, and I know it's a little small when I have to show it like this, but it will be one sheet of paper, it's out right now for final review. So again, it is draft in the district, the board has not approved the budget yet, although there's a tentative amount listed in there. But you can see Proposition 1 would be yes or no on the school budget. Proposition 2 would be yes or no on a 27-passenger bus and a 21-passenger bus, both replacements for the two that are going off lease. Both those vehicles are used primarily for the transport of handicapped students, although we do use them for some regular education trips as well. And the purchase of one-passenger van, our current passenger van has over 100,000 miles on it. Certainly is still in good shape, certainly is still in the fleet, but we're hoping to realize some savings in costs by using smaller vehicles. We do have a lot of trips that go out with 2, 3, 4 students. They're going in a 27-passenger or sometimes a 66-passenger bus, because we only have one 7-passenger van. And then the board members, the ballot vote, individuals are listed in alphabetical order. And you can see that we're looking for one full-term seat and one person to be elected to finish out the seat that was previously held by Dr. James Swanson. And we moved away from seat-specific elections, so they are now at-large, which means the person who gets the most votes will get the longest seat. And the person with the next most votes will get the second seat. So I just wanted to review the ballot, you can see at the bottom, ballots must be received by the district clerk by 5:00 PM on June 9th. So just put the reminder out there to everyone who's trying to vote to make sure they get that in the mail prior to June 9th. Because if you put it in the mail on June 9th, I do not believe it's going to show up here in time for it to be counted. So it's got to be in the district office by June 9th at 5:00 PM to be counted. So I just wanted to share that. Reminder again about the budget hearing. And again, that information was on our postcards, and that's June 1st at 6:00 PM, that'll be by video conference. We did already put the link out there on our school website, and certainly there'll be some information shared that evening with all the particulars of the budget as required. And I think that's what I had, I didn't necessarily go exactly in order, but that's what I wanted to make sure we just provided reminders and some information about folks.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, next item on our agenda, discussion items, the possible scheduling of a meet the board candidates night. We've got some inquiries from the public regarding interest in a meet the board candidates night. I think it's a good idea to do, the board was asked, the school was asked to host it. We sent the email out to the board members about a possible format that we could follow, how to get some questions from the public and then compile five or six. Give each member a one-minute opening statement, each candidate, I should say, each candidate a one-minute opening statement, two minutes to answer the questions that we have, and then a one-minute closing statement. We put out some rules, obviously, the questions need to be answered to the public, not any individuals. It needs to be a relevant, topical and respectful event, and we try to keep it in about 60 minutes. So we're going to put that information out for folks to see, but we have to discuss it tonight if the board members agree that it's a good idea to do. I will say that we were contacted by Mr. Chase, he had informed me that FIDA had done it before, I don't know how long ago, but they had hosted either a similar event or an actual meet the candidates event before my getting on the board. They offered to either host it or maybe help us in our coordinating of it, so I want to put that out there as well. Dan and I spoke about it, and we think it'd be a good idea to do, each board member would speak to their folks, you know, folks in the public, get questions, and then we would compile a list based on the most, the majority of the issues that people want to talk about. So we would compile five or six questions and then pick someone to start on the first question, and obviously, the next person in a row would start to answer the second question after everyone has addressed each question. I think it's a great idea, like I said, the public supports, or at least the people I've talked to so far. Now we need to know what the board thinks about it, so need some feedbacks, folks.
I'm in favor of it, I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good platform to allow people to really, you know, put their voice out there.
Thank you.
Especially given the situation.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to say, especially given the situation we're in, where we can't really all get together to have those type of things, I think doing it would be great.
Todd, you had brought this to our attention as well, you want to speak on it?
Yes, you know, I went through this in my first term, so that was about 13, 15 years ago, when I went through that in the auditorium. And we had a great attendant, I was attended really well that night, with some great questions. But again, I think I agree with what Chris was just saying in terms of it gives the public an opportunity to see, you know, what the different candidates are thinking about some of the issues that are faced uniquely to Fort Edward. We have a lot to handle on our plate to help Mr. Ward out and the district administrators as we move forward. And it'd be nice just to hear what some of them have to say, so I agree with it, yeah, I would like to see that being done.
James?
I agree also, I agree also, there's no downside here, and again, in the spirit of transparency, we want everybody to know as much as we can possibly do. I think we owe it to the public to let them hear what people have to say, where they stand, what their ideas are, what their ambitions and goals are, so I'm all for it.
Okay, anyone else want to speak on that, board members?
I agree with everybody else said, it sounds like that's a good idea, that way we have as much information in one set forum that people can go to and watch and/or listen. I know we've done that in the past when we've had to put people on, we'd have them speak or kind of let us know what their thoughts and things are. So to have kind of a structure and a forum, I think would be great for everybody to kind of see where everybody's thoughts are.
Great, okay, so it's up to us now over the next day or two to speak to some folks in the public, speak to some stakeholders, and get some questions from folks, and then we'll compile the questions, get a majority of what people want to know about and formulate the questions. Again, Dan will publish some rules so that the candidates know, to keep it respectful, keep it topical. Everyone will have the opportunity to have their two minutes per answer, and we'll try to keep it into a 60-minute format and put out a link there and let everybody join, hopefully. Dan, you want to speak a little more to it?
Yeah, should we offer a chance for them to email questions to Dan also, rather than meet the meeting on the street? So we'll give them an option to do that, everyone feels like they're going to be, we want everybody involved, as many as possible.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant that they should email them to us if they had questions, folks that are here and then folks that aren't on this meeting right now. We can maybe give them a call, like some stakeholders that we know are interested in this stuff. But yeah, email them to Dan or email them to us and then go ahead.
I'm going to ask that the questions, if folks want to email questions, they email to Toby.
Oh, yeah, Toby.
The district clerk. So that will just make it so they're going to one person, and then Toby could share out the ones that come from the community or from folks with the entire board. And I have, I did take a minute and really quickly type out a draft of a meet the candidates, and I can share that, I'd like to share it with everybody, just to get some feedback on it, right? I do think that in the end, we're looking at the eight board members to kind of narrow the questions down, to take them all and consolidate them into that, that six or seven or eight questions that we would have for this event that evening. But yes, absolutely, folks should be able to email their questions, but in the end, we can't necessarily answer 50 questions that night. That way, if they go to the board members, each board member could maybe take the lead on pulling together one question. And that way, we'd have a bank of eight maybe to choose from to get down to that six or seven centralized questions. Again, I'm just thinking through it with you folks. Let me share this screen of, and it's nothing elaborate so far. And I didn't put a date down there, although I have a couple of possible dates. Just really quickly, I had three sections, opening remarks or opening statement, each candidate gets two minutes. We would choose the order by random, so to start, we would pick somebody at random, I would pick somebody at random, names out of a hat, whatever way folks want to do it. And so then we would go in that order, and after that, alphabetical order would take over. So when we got to the questions, we would want to have six or seven, I put that down, certainly it's open to your discussion or your direction, as developed by board members from constituency feedback or emails or however you want to do that. And we would allow each candidate two minutes to respond to the question. So we would have question one, and candidate, candidate one would answer the question, and then candidate two would respond, and then three, and then four. Because right now, we do have four completed, four people on the ballot for those seats. So that's kind of what I had, and then the next question, the next person in the alphabetical order will be the first, and we would go down, so everybody would get a chance to be first going through the questioning, and once the questions were over, everybody would, each candidate would have two minutes to make closing remarks about how, you know, about how they feel about Fort Edward and the issues and everything that we're dealing with here, as well as everything that we have to offer our students and the fantastic job everybody here does to put a great product out there so that our students have services and opportunities for education and beyond.
I just have a question, who would moderate the meeting?
So at this point, I thought that I would be, I'm certainly okay abdicating that. But with the way that the video conferencing works, we certainly have to have somebody in, somebody in that position that moderates it and says, you know, you've got 10 seconds left or 30 seconds, I'm able to do it, I'm able to step aside if folks want me to.
Any preference, Ella?
No, I was just wondering, sorry.
No, no problem.
And I think you are the most appropriate one to do it.
Yeah, definitely.
Good, yeah, I just got to take a look at the time, because we don't want to keep it 60 minutes, and if we're doing two minutes at the end, two minutes in the beginning, and then two minutes per question. We'll formulate the amount of questions based on that. So obviously, we have to come up with a date, we have to invite the candidates to the meeting, announce when the meeting's going to be, and then go from there. Does anyone have any other discussion on this?
I'm going to, I'm going to, am I still on?
Yeah.
I am going to, I have a couple of dates that I put out there, as we know, we already have the June 1st date for our budget hearing. So that date is taken, and we have some work to do to get the budget notice out, once the budget is approved this evening, there's a lot of work to be done. So I circled two dates on the counter, I don't know how they work for the candidates yet, nor do I know how they work for the board yet, but I had May 27th or June 2nd.
So June 2nd is going to be better, because the 27th is my son's birthday, and I will be participating in that, so.
Actually, yeah.
I'm a June.
Yeah, May 27th doesn't work for me either, because there's a village meeting I got to attend, so. June 2nd, does everyone agree with June 2nd, of course, we have to find out from the candidates, who are the stars of the show, but.
Does it work for you, Ella?
Yeah, June 2nd is good for me.
Cool, yeah, for me.
Two weeks from today, yes.
That's good, okay, out, Joe?
Yep, I'm good with June 2nd.
And then I probably missed somebody.
So can I just interject something really quickly? There's a lot of feedback. Is, so I guess in the past, somebody from FIDA would moderate the meet the candidates forum, so due to the fact that the school shouldn't be doing that, is that still something that we need to look into?
Why wouldn't the school be able to do it?
Because the school, hang on a second, just shouldn't be involved in the election, I guess, is kind of the comment I have received. So should we look at an outside source for moderation?
I don't know why it would be appropriate to ban it.
It's also a board meeting if you're all attending, because you'll have a quorum.
Okay, oh, that's true.
Nelson's reached out, and he's done a great job at talent shows and all those kind of things, he's offered to help.
And if it's a conflict of interest for us to do it, maybe it would be good for somebody from FIDA to do it?
Well, let's not throw a conflict of interest, I can't see how that would.
I just don't know, that's what I'm saying.
But I'm okay with, yeah.
Once I received the email from Todd asking about the possibility, and again, I'm happy to abdicate the responsibility. I did reach out to our attorney, Ashley Enchant from Gervin and Fralazo, she advised me that we could hold such an event, and there was not a conflict to do so.
Okay.
Certainly, we can't, we can't, should not be endorsing folks, but giving them a forum to answer questions and provide statements is perfectly fine. Based on review of counsel of that.
Okay, just throwing that out there.
Either way, it's at the pleasure of the board, just you folks make a decision and we'll move forward with that.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, I think we're hosting it, I think Dan would be a good person to me. Again, we're going to talk about the questions, we're going to put the questions forward, so I don't see a problem with that. I appreciate Nelson and those guys wanting to help out after they saw the thing on the consent agenda coming in to help out, I appreciate that. But I can't see why we can't do it, and actually making it something we do every year.
I think that's a good idea, we do it every year.
Yeah, okay, all right, so let's start, hopefully, folks that are joining the meeting with us, talk to some other folks. Let's get some questions, and then we can formulate those questions together, we'll work via email, and then, or we'll come up with a work session or something, but we'll put those questions together, and then we'll do it on June 2nd.
Tom, it should be set a due date for those questions to have into us, into Toby?
That's important, I think, so we're on Tuesday, I don't even know what day of the week is Tuesday, right? So maybe by next Tuesday, that would be a good thing to have it, because that gives us a little over a week to put it all together. And again, part of the formula of this, I'm in agreement that we should get the questions together and then send them out to the candidates, so they have time to prepare. I don't think this should be an on-the-spot type of situation, but some of these types of things are that way, and some are, we give the questions to the candidates prior to, so they, you know, aren't on the spot and they can give us an informed answer. And that kind of comes down to another discussion, folks, how do you want to go about doing that? Getting the questions together and giving them to the candidates prior to, or do you want the moderator to kind of just read the questions on that night? How was it before, Todd, when you did it?
Well, I was asked questions from my uncle and other family members, many different people during that session, but in terms of, I don't believe that I had questions, but I would be one that would prefer to have the questions ahead of time, so I could do my planning and all thought out, I think we'll get better answers out of the candidates, providing them the questions ahead of time, and we want their best thinking forward and not just catch them on the spot, so I would encourage to send them out the questions when we have them.
I agree.
I agree.
A hundred percent.
Okay, perfect, so that's good, so let's try to get the questions together by next Tuesday, maybe have a work session on Wednesday or email and get everything compiled, and then we'll get them out to the candidates prior to the event, does that work with you, Dan?
Yeah, it does, can I jump in just for another, hopefully, 30 seconds?
Yeah, yeah.
So two things, I do see that the postcard is on the line, or at least was. Michael, we certainly would appreciate any help getting the word out about this event and the opportunity for the public to send questions to either directly to board members or to email them to District Clerk Toby Bissette. And secondly, I believe all four of the potential candidates on the ballot are on the line right now, so I could get maybe a response now from them. I know I'm putting folks on the spot, if you're available on June 2nd, say 6:00 PM, board, does 6:00 PM sound like a good time for this?
I think so, for folks that work, at least they can get home from work and get ready for this, so yeah.
I don't know if, and if you can't unmute, if you want to put it in the chat, or we have asked people to kind of cut down on the chat, because it's distracting, but I know I saw, I'm pretty, I know Mike is here, pretty sure I saw Christina and Dan and Becky Saltzman, so Christina says yes.
Dan said yes.
Did Dan put one in there that said yes too, sorry?
Yeah.
And then.
Mr. Glass?
Yeah, I'm good.
And then I'm just waiting to see, give me one second, because we don't want to exclude anybody. Yeah, I saw, Elaine, are you on, are you able to respond if you're available that evening? And if you're not, I can reach out, but.
She might have stepped away or something.
Yeah, that's fine, I can, I can certainly reach out to her, but I'll take that as the other three candidates are available and willing to participate on 6:00 PM. And we'll get the questions out to you once we have them formulated, so probably I would feel good that we could get them to the candidates. If we have, if the board members have the feedback by next Tuesday, which is what we asked, then I would hope to try to get the questions out to the candidates by Friday.
Yeah.
So they'd have, you know, a few days to formulate their answers.
Cool.
Does that make sense, everybody?
I think so, yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Dan, thank you, everyone. Okay, so next up on our agenda is item 8, an action item. I need a motion to adopt the district's 2020, 2021 budget in the amount of $11,833,410, including budget notice and property tax report card, I need a motion.
Motion.
Mike and Chris, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, so moved.
Just for clarity, anybody standing? Let's hit zero.
Okay, personnel, I need a motion to approve the MOA between the Fort Edward Teachers Association and the Fort Edward Board of Education in reference to compensation, benefits and other items, I need a motion.
Motion.
Okay, I know I heard Mike, who else, Chris, okay, Mike and Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, any discussion?
So there, there were some, some clerical updates to that M O A. Put the updated one in your folder, uh, but that did not happen until about ten after five. Again, it doesn't change the substance of the M O A. It does make some clerical changes to it. So if we need to review that, then, then you could table it and we could do it after executive session. Cause then I could pop it up on the screen and show it to all of you and explain exactly what the changes are. But again, they, they don't change the substance of the agreement.
I'd like to make. I, I can, I can't vote on something until I, I see it, um, that part.
All right, it's on the drive now, guys. You can take a look and we can table it and do it at the end. But, uh, like Dan said, the substance hasn't changed and that's the important part. I'll, I'll jump the gun and say that, uh, before we, uh, adopt this, I want to, uh, thank, uh, FEDA. It's been a, a long discussion. Uh, Dan's done a lot of work and there have been multiple conversations with FEDA and they have come to the table with us and we talked about this in the beginning as being a team effort. And, uh, I really want to thank them for coming to the table and, uh, and, and assisting us with, uh, working to get the school back, uh, in some semblance of where we want to be. So thank you very much to those members. Um, uh, again, I'm thanking them before we ratify, but I, I think it's important to say that. So. Um, all right. So we're going to table that. So I need a motion to table it.
So moved.
Is that?
James.
Is that the A?
That's A.
Personnel, yeah. Uh, so I, I have Anita, I believe, with a motion and who's next?
I, I was not, I was not the motion.
I made the motion.
I'm sorry, James, I need a second.
Second it.
Joe?
Is this, is, is this a motion to table it?
Motion to table, yes, sir. Any further discussion on personnel, item A? Okay, all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We're all good? Okay, all right. So it's tabled. Um, all right. So motion, uh, for B or most to approve the M O A between the Fort Edward Teachers Association and the Fort Edward Board of Education in reference to retirement date notification for a specific employee.
Motion.
Chris? Todd? Um, so Chris and Todd, any discussion?
So I'm, I'm going to come again and say that there was one small change to that M O A as well, occurred about five, ten today. So I would recommend that, that the board table that one as well. And, and I can go through that change very quickly with everybody and, and the new one is in your folder, but it wasn't there till like five, ten or five fifteen.
Okay. All right. So we need a motion to table B.
So moved.
So moved.
James and Ella? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. All right, thanks. No one opposed, right? Okay. Uh, so we will revisit those before the end of this meeting. Okay, um, and we are at the end of this meeting. Um, uh, Toby, do you have any, uh, community comments for the, uh, the end, uh, the final portion of the meeting, I should say?
No, I do not. No one has reached out to me.
Okay, thanks. Um, so we will have to come out of exec and take action on those two items. Um, but we do need to leave this meeting, go into an executive session and come back to this meeting. So members of the public, uh, I do apologize, but we, uh, we have to go to exec and we will be back. Um, uh, Dan, you want to send out the appropriate invite and then I guess you have to keep this open, correct?
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to stop the recording.
Okay.
Um, just, just so that the folks aren't in there being recording. And when we come back out, I'll rejoin the link and start another recording. And we'll complete our business then. And then both the recordings will be, uh, posted appropriately by Mr. Herman. He does a great job for us.
Yes, he does. Awesome. Okay, so, uh, we will see you folks and.
Do we, do we vote to win?
So I'm sorry. Uh, I need a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters referring to the employment of specific individuals in contract negotiations.
Motion.
Anita and Mike, it sounded like, uh, any discussion? Uh, Board of Education members and other individuals invited into executive session are reminded that all matters discussed during executive session must be kept in the strictest confidence. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, folks.
Just really quickly, does the board need Charlene? I'd like to let her go if we don't, we don't need her for the M O A stuff. So we should be good with her for tonight. We're going to need her more to get everything ready for the first.
Sure.
So if we can let her go, the same thing, I don't know if both Karen and Sam were on. I told them they did not need to be on this evening. You guys don't need anybody but me from here forward, I don't believe.
Correct. No, thank you, uh, everyone. Um, but you guys can, uh, you guys can go ahead.
And Toby, I'll, I'll take the minutes for the end of the meeting as well.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, okay.
We will be back.
Eight to zero and it's, uh, six forty?
Okay.
All right. James has got to jump back in. There was something with his, uh, something with his connection.
Okay.
So I'm just going to run down through the list again. If people can, if, if board members can say here, that'll help me make sure. I, I can see Tom, I can see Anita. Um, I see Chris, are Tom, Anita, Chris, I see Ella. James, are you, James Donahue, are you, are you back in yet? Okay, I'll skip. Mike Glass?
I'm here.
Todd Tyler? Wait now, Todd, how about, um, I thought I saw Joe?
Yep, I'm back.
Right. Just waiting on, uh, Todd and James to jump back over. Uh, and just, just for informational purposes, for everybody who's out there, we did hear from, um, from Elaine Tracky, uh, she is available on that same date. So we do have confirmation from all four of the candidates that they're available for June second at six P M. And we'll get a link out to that on our website for folks. We're going to do it by Google Meet. And, uh, like we had said, we'll get the questions out. Uh, we need questions from the community into either the board members. Um, if, if you see them, you can provide questions or to Mrs. Bissett, the district clerk, uh, by email and she'll provide them to the board and the board will be coordinating all of those questions into six, seven, eight questions to, to be used with our, um, with our candidates. Todd, did you make it back in?
It's on here. Yep.
All right, sorry, I didn't. And James Donahue, did you make it back in?
I see him on there. I think he's muted.
Yeah. Up here, there, James. Thanks. We have the full board back on. Um, you had the two, you had the two items up on your personnel that you had tabled.
Okay, so, uh, personnel, item A, most to approve the M O A between the Fort Edward Teachers Association and the Fort Edward Board of Education in reference to compensation benefits and other items. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second. Todd? Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is everyone, okay?
Anybody abstaining? Anybody, um?
Most. No, I think we're good.
Okay, eight zero.
All right, good. Thank you again, uh, to F E T A. A lot of work went behind this. Thank you, Dan, for all your work there. Um, this is good to see us coming together and, uh, and working hard together to get this, uh, the budget where we need it to be or close to where we need it to be. Um, okay, so I need a motion for, a motion to approve the M O A between the Fort Edward Teachers Association and the Fort Edward Board of Education in reference to retirement date notification for a specific employee. Is that the right terminology?
And, and other F E T A members.
And other F E T A members. Can I get a motion for B?
Motion.
Chris and Mike, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 No, uh, no abstains, no objections. Okay, we're good. Okay. I need, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just, I was just going to provide a little bit of information.
Yeah.
You know, with, with the approval of those two M O As between the district and the teachers association, I, I'll echo what Tom said. Uh, thanks to the teachers association and their membership for their hard work. Um, and thanks to the board members for your hard work, all involved. Uh, it's a lot of time and effort. Uh, total savings looks like will be right around three hundred thousand dollars. Um, the majority of that is due to a, a substantial change in health insurance for the teachers association members. Um, another portion of that is due to a reduction in the salary of all Fort Edward Teachers Association members. And, and certainly the other part is due to, uh, the retirements of some folks, uh, based on um, that second M O A that allows for individuals who did not get a chance to provide notification by February first to still do so through June first. So I wanted to put that out there. Um, for everybody to know exactly what we were voting on. Now that it's been approved, we can share the details. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Uh, with that being said, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Yep.
I got a bunch there, but I think I heard Mike and Chris. Um, any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, uh, joining us and waiting while we got back from exec. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. I'm going to stop the recording, um, and then I'll stop the meeting. Have a great evening.